Good morning. I'd like to call the May 13th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. I'm Karen McGregor. Our Chair Charlie Johnson is not here today, so I'll be running the meeting. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on May 21st, 2024, at 10:30 a.m., beginning at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the Commission chambers during the meeting. If you're the applicant, you don't need to fill out one of the speaker request forms. If you're not the applicant and you want to speak on an item, the forms are in the back of the room. Roll call? Just Charlie missing. And then, have you all had a chance to read the minutes? Do I have a motion?
So moved to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the agenda? Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Item number four is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 1801, for Ron Wyffenbach, to review a seasonal retail sales of Class C fireworks in a commercial district. The staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, CUR 18-01, with conditions. Item number five is Conditional Use Permit Review, CU 18-09, for Scott and Christine Gerson, to review a recreational vehicle to be used as temporary living quarters while building a single-family residence in an agriculture district. The staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit, CUR 18-09, with the applicant's concurrence. Item number six is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 18-14, for All American Sales, Doug Bellinger, to review seasonal retail sales of Class C fireworks in heavy industrial district. The staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, CUR 18-14, with conditions. Item number seven is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 21-67, for Kelly and Casey Kurtz, to review living in a double-wide mobile home while building a single-family residence. The staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 21-67, with the applicant's concurrence as the double-wide mobile home has been removed. Item number eight is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 22-47, for Travis Christman, to review a contractor's storage in the agriculture district. The staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, CUR 22-47, with conditions. Item number nine is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 23-09, for Brian and Jennifer Faisner, to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district. The staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, CUR 22-09, with conditions. Item number 10 is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 23-10, for Nathan and Alexis Sobleski, to review a grain bin to be utilized for food and beverage sales in a suburban residential district. The staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, CUR 23-10, with conditions. Item number 11 is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 23-23, for Ryan and Rhonda Kelly, to review an accessory dwelling unit in the agriculture district. The staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit, CUR 23-23, with the applicant's concurrence. Item number 12 is Conditional Use Permit Review, CUR 23-38, for Peaceful Valley Hideaway LLC, William and Valerie Landis, and Connor Donahoe is the agent, to review a vacation home rental in a rural residential district. The staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit, CUR 23-38, with conditions. And finally, item 13 is Plan Unit Development Overlay Review, PU 22-17, for David Allard, to review a plan unit development overlay for a mixed-use structure, a mobile home park, and a multifamily dwelling in a commercial district. The staff recommends approval of Plan Unit Development Overlay Review, PU 22-17, with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items that you, that Planning would like removed?
No, not at this time.
Okay. How about Commissioners?
10, please.
Item number 10. Are there any items that the public would like removed from this list? Otherwise, our consent agenda gets approved with one motion. Seeing none, I would, oh, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number 10.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. Item number 10.
Morning Commissioners. Jason Thedison, Assistant Planning Director.
Just a quick thing. How does this wastewater thing work? I've been trying to figure this out. What do they put it in and where do they take it?
Yep. So the way that he explained it to me is that it's a portable restroom that they're going to drag out there. And then it's got removable tank that can be towed up the road to his other planned unit development where the septic system is sized appropriately to accept the additional.
So they actually pull the container out?
Well, he explained it to me, yes.
And do they put another one in, or they just take it out, dump it, and bring it back?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's all I needed. Thank you.
Okay. You bet.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we pass item number 10, CUR 23-10.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Megan Talmadge, Planner. Agenda item number 14 is a lot line adjustment plat and is to combine two lots to create Lot 17 Revised of Granite Point Subdivision. The applicant and owners are David and Barbara Fields. This is located at 24240 Granite Point Court. The existing land use is residential. Staff recommends approval of Lot Line Adjustment Plat, COLAPL 24-001. There are minor changes that need to be made to the certificates. But the subdivision is connected to Keystone Sewer System and has private access to water. There's no conditions within the planned unit development that would interfere with the applicant's request. And staff finds it to be in harmony with the surrounding area.
Do we have, are there questions for Megan?
I have one. Megan, you have in property history proposed lots. You've got .67 acre.
Yes.
And then on the other part, and on the plat, you have .57.
That was a typo.
Okay.
On the survey, it is .57.
Right. I noticed. Okay. That's all I had. I have no problem with anything else.
Are there any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Cody Sack, Environmental Planner. Item 15 is Preliminary Plan, COPPL 24-0007. It's to create tracks 1, 2, and 3 of Keystone Adventures Edition. The applicant and landowner is Keystone Additions, Inc., Peggy Bussie. The surveyor is D.C. Scott Surveyors. Location of the property is 24035 Highway 16A. Located, involves 23.81 acres. Co- zoning is Highway Service District. Basically, what the applicants are proposing to do is just adjust the lot lines. So currently, the property looks like this. They're just proposing to break up the lot lines and create three tracks. It does appear to be in harmony with existing land uses and existing lots in the area. And there was a comprehensive plan amendment that was approved by the Board of Commissioners, and a rezon that was approved by the Board of Commissioners on February 20th. So with that, staff is recommending approval of preliminary plan, COPPL 24-007.
Other questions for Cody?
I have one, Madam. That noodle that goes through there, it says 66 feet wide. What is that? That's not the highway.
This and here?
Yeah, it runs all the way, like an S, it runs all the way through there, says 66 feet.
Yeah. So that used to be a portion of the right-of-way for DOT. Through some land transfers, they vacated that and the property.
So is that the one we redid the zoning on, on that part?
Correct.
All right. Yep. That's the only question I had. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 16.
Item number 16 is Preliminary Plan, COPPL 24-0008. It's to combine six lots to create Lot A Revised of Songquist Acres Subdivision. The applicant and landowner is Rob Hammerquist. Surveyor is Davis Engineering. Location of the property is 13049 Songquist Lane. Current zoning is rural residential and agriculture district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off of Songquist Road, and there is a special flood hazard area on the property, including floodway. On January 9th, 2024, staff approved layout plan, LPL 23-29, with conditions. It does appear that the applicant is meeting those conditions, except for eight-foot utility and minor drainage easements need to be dedicated on the plat. And the staff will work with the surveyor to get those done. Basically, what applicants proposing to do is, it's kind of hard to see up in here, but there's six total lots. He is looking to create just one lot, combine them into one. He did receive approval of a variance to approve the road to ordinance 14 standards, but it is a 20-foot wide paved road. So with that, staff is recommending approval of PPL 24-008.
Other questions for Cody?
I have one. Cody, on the analysis, you have, or rezoned the entire property to ag or ranch at, which I can understand. Why don't you make that part of the recommendation?
So dual zoning, there's nothing in our ordinance that says you can't have dual zoning. While we would prefer it be one zoning district, it's up to the applicant at that point, too.
Okay. I didn't see that. That's fine. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
I move approval. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 17. I do have a speaker request form on this one.
Morning, Gink Commissioners. Jason Thedison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number 17 is Conditional Use Permit Amendment, CU 04-35, to allow three additional storage structures on the subject property. The applicant is Chris Peterson, Big Game Storage LLC. Location of the property is 3395 Cavern Road. It is 21.94 acres, currently zoned commercial district. Existing land use is storage units, a single-family residence, and shop building. Access is off Cavern Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. So what's happened here is that this was previously reviewed, and there is a condition of approval in there. Condition number six, that stated that if the applicant wanted to add any additional structures, he originally proposed 13. So the Planning Commission approved up to 10, and he'd have to come back for another review to add the additional three. So that's why we're here today. You can see the site plan here. This is where he's proposing to put the three additional structures. So with that, that condition would be removed under this review if it's approved. Condition number nine was also amended, as it was not applicable to the commercial district. All other conditions of approval appear to be met, and staff has not received any complaints for the current or proposed use, and recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Amendment, CU 04-35, with conditions.
Other questions on this item? For Jason? No? Okay. Richard Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. My name is Rich Williams. I'm with Gunderson Palmer Law Firm. I'm here today representing Springfield Holdings LLC. Springfield Holdings owns land just north of the proposed addition. If you take a look at that map, it's just across the street. We recognize that there's been a CUP granted in the past for the units that are currently there. At this point, what we're asking for is additional conditions. I was kind of looking through this the other day, through the ordinances, and seeing where this really fits. And for commercial, it says, you know, if it's more appropriate in a light industrial, heavy industrial, or highway service, it's, you can't get a Conditional Use Permit for it. I understand that it's been granted in this instance. But just for, in terms of looking at, you know, what conditions might be applicable to this area, given the expansion, I kind of went back and I looked at the commercial district. What do you generally see in a commercial district? It's stuff like bakeries, barber shop, beauty schools, eating establishments, financial and credit institutions. So I'm like, well, how does that compare to the other zoning districts? So then I flipped to light industrial, and you see stuff like building materials, sales, lumberyard, bulk storage, equipment rental, equipment storage, and warehousing. So I guess, you know, the CUP's been granted before, so I'm thinking, okay, where does this really fit? And under light industrial, the section under special provisions says, "All operations are conducted behind a barrier, wall, or fence, that will not only hides the operations completely from view off a lot, but also mitigates any fumes, vibrations, smoke, or noise." Turning back to the CUP conditions, then, Section 2, and Criteria 2 under those. So if you look at Criteria 2 for the Conditional Use Permit, the second paragraph under Criteria 2 says, "Application guideline." Basically, explain how the proposed land use will fit into the neighborhood, and what will be done to avoid potential nuisances, such as limiting hours of operation, noise control measures, adequate parking, paving the parking area, or screening of outdoor storage. So clearly, what we have here is an outdoor storage situation. The line I talked about is directly north of Highway 44, across from the site, which is currently pursuant to the staff report, zoned as agricultural and rural residential. So essentially, what we're looking for here, if this CUP were to pass, would be a type of opaque screening, like you might see in light industrial, or that you would see as a conditional use under Criteria 2. And that might be, you know, opaque screening in terms of like a nice fence, or even trees, shrubs, or some sort of landscaping that would block that storage. Because what you see there on that site plan, you've got that outdoor storage, it looks like a number of campers. You also see what it looks like on page six of the staff report. And that's what you're seeing. You can see some of that from 44 as you pass. So I guess at the end of the day, you know, we're saying, look, you know, we understand there's a CUP here, but, you know, it might have fit better into light industrial, but it's already granted in this matter. But for both light industrial and Criteria 2, it definitely leaves room for that type of screening that we're asking for today. So, members of the Commission, wrap it up. I guess if this were to pass today, we'd ask for that additional screening, landscaping, some type of a visual buffer that would buffer this from Highway 44 and the lands north of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Williams?
I guess, and I know exactly where you're coming from. I guess my question would be, you've already got all this on here. You're going to add three more. What is the difference?
Well, I think they probably would have liked it in the first place. But at this point, you know, with the expansion, they called me up and said, hey, you know, what can we do? And I looked at the, what we've got here, and for options, and it looked like that would be a good addition for the expansion, and the existing property as it is.
I have a question, too. How long has Springfield Holdings owned the property across the road?
You know, I can't tell you. I've got the... Sorry, Madam Chair, I don't have a date of purchase for that right now.
Thank you.
So, Richard, what's the distance we're talking about, is the screening would be required on?
Well, it looks like, so you can kind of see it on this map. But, you know, our suggestion would be that it would be a distance enough to screen in basically that storage use from Highway 44 in the lands to the north. So, you know, the site plan that you've got in front of you doesn't have the measurement in terms of foot or miles. But our request would be that it covers the entire proposed use for the CUP.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So this is probably a question for the staff. As the screening, if screening is required, is that a, is that a, who determines what that screening would be? Is that us?
No.
Follow a state guideline?
That would be staff. I can answer that question. Under our general district provisions, it does say screening is required when land zoned commercial, light industrial, heavy industrial, highway service, or planned unit development of buts or residential district. The screening material, whether man-made or natural, must provide sufficient visual and audio buffer, is what it says.
Jason, did you have a comment?
No.
So it doesn't say height, or what actual material has to be used? It's just, okay.
Has this always been zoned commercial? Wasn't it a lumberyard, not a lumberyard, but a storage area for, was it light industrial before, or was it always?
I think it's always been commercial.
Always been commercial.
Sure. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Michelle Swanson. We honor the property directly to the west of this property. The first time Chris came to the county commission to request this, Chris told all the neighbors right here, "I will put up a fence. I will put up a fence so you can't see anything. It will be classy, and it will be clean." He did put up a fence. He put up a fence to keep people out, just a chain link fence. So he stood here the first time he was here and said he would put up a fence. It's not been done. Fence you could not see. It would block the view. It has not been done. It is full of construction debris. It is a mess. People that we know that live Johnson siding, that we run into more than once, 20 times. Too bad about the junkyard right next to you. It's a junkyard. Probably 50 to 70 cars, RVs, boats, boats with tarps flapping around. We walk our property. We get their construction debris on our property. 24/7 construction zone. No quiet hours are honored. Started out four. Now, this would put him at 12 buildings, I believe. Probably more lighting. We have drainage issues, a lot of vehicles leaking stuff. We are, the area has been deemed an ultra-sensitive aquifer area. We got drainage areas. We got stuff leaking. We got herbicides, pesticides. We're not only worried about our well, we're worried about Rapid City Water. So I think, before we go further, I mean, it's a mess. Can we consider environmental effects? Can we consider what's going on, big picture? And hold the speed to the fire for what he told us he would do when he first came to the county commission. We'd sure appreciate that, as neighbors, a lot of neighbors in the area, same thing. A lot of people traveling that scenic highway that say, "Too bad about the junkyard. Those things are awful. What a mess. We hear it day after day." So if those things could be considered, we'd sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
I guess...
I have a question for Michelle.
Yes.
So, Michelle, do you recall, at the time of that discussion, then, was the fencing supposedly to surround the entire property, or just?
All he said, yeah, was that he would put a fence to block the view, a really nice, hardy fence to block the view, and these would be clean and classy. Those were his words.
Okay.
Here, not just to us as neighbors, but to the county commission.
Thank you.
Yep. But fence to block the view. We'd appreciate that. Thanks.
Board, any further discussion? I guess I have a concern about the environmental issues. If there truly are environmental concerns, I think it should be put off for a couple weeks and checked out before we approve it.
Okay.
I didn't fill out one of those.
Sure.
Okay. I didn't fill it out. I just want to address the leakage on the property.
Would you come up here?
Yes.
And give us your name?
I'm Debbie Grace. Chris is my son. I live with him often. I'm in probably seven months of the year. There is no leakage from any automobiles, boats, campers, on the ground anywhere. And the only way Mrs. Swanson would see that would be to be on the property, which I don't think she's ever been on the property. But there's no leakage. It's all gravelled. It's all really nice. I've gone around several times, picked up garbage, if there is any. Are people that Chris rent, it's to keep it clean, you know? Everything is clean. Yes. Is there a mess on the one side where he's going to put the buildings? Yes. And I'm talking about a dirt pile. But that dirt pile needs to be there in order to put the three buildings in. So therefore, it will be done after he is done with all the building that he's planning on doing. So it's one person's word about leakage into the ground, because we are worried about the environment. If she's talking about a little junk pile, that is from Chris's two boys going out into the woods and cleaning up the property that has junk in it since it was purchased. And just waiting for a load to be put on a flatbed and taken to the junkyard. But all that junk that she's talking about is what was on the property when it was purchased. To answer the person, I believe, who was talking before about the property across, they have Emily owned that property for two years. Let's go back and see what was on that property two years ago was that. So now you're going to come up here and complain about what's across the road, when you knew it was there, when you purchased the property? That's about all I have to say. You know, he keeps the property. You worry about the environment. He has donated, you know, I can't even tell you how much he's done for the fire department, for conservation, for giving the logs, for donating everything, donating ground soil to people. I can't tell you how much he's done. And for to stop this progress of three buildings when he was already somewhat approved of it before. Every building, every outlet is full. And if there is a trailer with a wind-blown topper on it, what are we supposed to do? We don't discriminate against anyone. The wind up here is windy, and if it blows off the tarp, it blows off the tarp. He calls the person and says, "Your tarp is now blowing off the boat." We pick it up, and the person comes and tries to fix it, or whatever they can do. You know, if one camper is a 2021 camper, and because we have somebody that has a 2014 camper on there, it might look a little junky to somebody. Sorry. We don't discriminate, you know? What do you consider junk, and what we consider junk? That's all we have to say.
Is there an office on site?
Yes.
And he works out of that?
Uh huh.
Okay. Thank you.
Right by the gate there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
For me?
Yeah.
Oh.
For the owner, yeah. The three buildings, will they be parking for the outside automobiles, RVs, boats, that kind of stuff?
Covered parking.
Or will they be actually enclosed storage units?
That would be for Chris to answer, but I believe it's covered parking. And at one time, the ones that along the road here, along that driveway, that are just free vehicles, he'd like to put an overhang to hide everything, but he wasn't approved of that before because that's the purpose of hiding all the vehicles so nobody has to complain about somebody's has a wrecked camper that they don't approve of, you know, is parked along the fence and you see it. You know, what are we supposed to do? Say, "Sorry, it's an ugly eyesore. Can you please park it in the back so nobody, no neighbor sees it?" You know? But that would be for Chris to complain to know. I don't know about those buildings that he's putting on.
Chris, would you mind coming up? Yavi, introduce yourself for the record, please.
Hi, Chris Peterson. Yes, those buildings will be completely RV, blend in, nice color, brown, like all the other buildings up there.
And then are you opposed to doing some kind of privacy screening along 44?
I put up a nice brown fence of $30,000. Yes, I have a nice fence around it. It's brown, colored brown. I have a privacy fence from my neighbor to the south. That fence cost me around $17,000. And that's a brown picket wood fence. Looks beautiful. My neighbor was very happy that I put that up there. Along the highway, there is, I would have to put up a 30-foot fence to block it because the highway is actually
Elevated.
30 feet higher than the storage facility. So, there would be, like I said, a 30-foot fence would probably have to be put up solid fence all along the highway not to see it. What I was wanting to do was do covered storage over off of those buildings, but in my conditional use permit, which is 7,500 square foot per building. That's not much of a building. The building that's right in the middle, those are 40-foot units on the one side. It's a 30-foot overhang on the other side. That's my 7,500 square foot. I went to the planning department and asked for covered because I would have went covered all over that to, my renters want covered storage. They want from hail, the sun, the snow, and then that would also protect and look a lot nicer than being out in the open. And there is no garbage that's going to my neighbors to the west. That is ridiculous. The wind comes out. We get a lot of high winds up there. Come out of the north, they come out of the west.
Their houses up here, the property's down here. You can't even see the property from their house.
This facility was owned by the sawmill, Potter Sawmill, many years. He's always doing construction. I've got the books of all the crap and the stuff that he did. And he threw tires. He threw, every time I, I do some excavating, I do all dirt work on this property, I'm, I'm digging up stuff that was thrown down in the, in the valley. You know, he changed oil, and I think he just threw the filter, you know, on the ground. We are continually picking up stuff from the Potter Sawmill. I think he had it for 30 years. And it's, I'm, I'm going to keep working and keep it nice. It's a big, it's a big property, but I'm limited to 7,500 square foot on a building. See what I'm saying? I don't know why other storage, I still have never agreed to the 7,500 square foot because those are the only size buildings that I can put on that property. And I would love to do covered storage for people. It's too many covenses in Rapid City. I've got, I'm 100% full. I have a waiting list. I've, there was a need for this on, on this commercial property.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think the applicant is correct about the old Potter Sawmill. That was there for many, many years, and then the remains of it after they finally closed was a horrific eyesore. My own feeling about these storage places is I wish there were many, many fewer of them, but they are a reality that we have to accommodate. I think the applicant is also correct about the elevation issue. You can put up a screen on those fences, but it's not going to really hide that. At one, at, at, at some elevations, it may look a little better, but the reality is I don't think it's going to be much of an improvement. I don't live across from it like some of the people do, but I drive by it with some frequency. And I, it appears to me to be a well-run, organized, you know,
Thank you.
facility
Thank you.
for what it is. As I say, I'd much prefer to have something else there, but I think it's a realistic solution to a real problem, people wanting to have storage. So, I don't think we want to make the perfect the enemy of the good. And so, I would be less inclined to burden the applicant with any additional expense or requirements because of a future applicant who may be developing something that is more attractive perhaps, but nevertheless, I, I, I'm inclined to support the applicant's application at this time.
But I'm sure. Yes.
You were talking about a larger structure to park vehicles under. How would that compare to three of these construction-wise? Would it cost you more to build one big covered parking area versus these three structures, the square footage that you're limited to?
Basically, it would be like an overhang. So, when you look at that, those vehicles and the campers and boats in the middle, those would have a roof over the top of them.
Just a big carport, essentially.
Correct. And that would help hide, but again, they would, you would see less campers, boats from the highway when you drive by.
Yeah, and the direction I'm thinking is do we modify the CUP to allow a larger structure so you cover more of that outdoor stuff and it not cost you much more than what, or less than what three additional structures would cost you on the property? Or a combination of one additional structure and a better covered parking area?
Correct, yes. I was wanting these three buildings because that was in our contract of the conditional use permit. After my 10, we get three more. I would like to do these three. Actually, I was already kind of told that I would, I could do them. I didn't have to go through this meeting, so I reordered them. So, they are, they're away.
So, you're already down that road?
I'm already down that road. And I was going to come back after those buildings are done this summer and then talk to you guys about the covered storage. And let's, I'm going to add, I can add those covered storages and get these vehicles and campers underneath, and it would look a lot nicer. And those vehicles and those campers, I have been keeping them away inside the property, away from the highway so that it looks nicer. And those mini storages are all along the highway. And those buildings eventually will protect, and you won't see campers, boats, as, as many. As my mom was saying, I don't discriminate against people and bring in their stuff to park it on my facility. If it does look a little bad, I try to tell them, "Let's, let's put it here. Let's put it behind this building, going between these campers."
Any more questions from the board?
Ma'am, Brittany, is there a variance option on that 7,500 feet?
I think that was a, just a recommendation in the conditional use permit. If there's any major changes to the conditional use permit, it'd be, have to be re-advertised and amended. So, to add the carports to increase the size of the structures, it would have to be an amendment.
Is there, like, is there, so that's what originally was set up? Is there a max carport area that?
No, that was just what was approved by the planning commission at the time.
There is an option of covering that whole section with, through a variance that would go through.
So, just to clarify, that wouldn't be a variance. That would just be an amendment to the condition.
I have another speaker request from Joyce Chagru.
My name is Joyce Chagru, and I'm a citizen of Pennington County, and I live in Silver City. I go buy this business several times a week, so I've watched it from the very beginning. And the management here is very well, very well done. I actually rent one of the very first units, number 10, in the very first structure. And my sons now rent one that's like 144 or something like that. Chris is very accommodating, very helpful. It's well-managed. I understand what people say, but as I originally spoke on this when he came before you with his first request, it's better to have all of these vehicles, and I'm right along Cavern Road where the first row is there of, of vehicles parked along the fence, than in all our front yards and our driveways around the county. So, I watch it. It's not beautiful, but it's a business. It's a storage unit business. And it's better to have all of this in one spot than on all our lots around, I think. And Chris is one that we should support in the county because he's a good manager and will try his best, I'm sure, to do whatever is needed to make this acceptable. But those of us who drive that highway knew what was going to happen to that corner, and some of us remember the sawmill. So, this isn't all that bad. It's a commercial structure. And the fire department is across the street, across the highway. So, it is what it is. But it's very helpful to have it out in that part of the county. Thank you.
Thanks, Joyce. Any other comment?
Madam Chair?
Board?
Move to approve CU 04-35.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you. Number 18.
Item number 18 is Major Plan Unit Development Amendment 94-02 to amend the existing planned unit development for a change in lot line arrangement. The applicant is Little Guys LLC, Powderhouse Lodge. Kevin Brink is the agent. Site location is 24125 Highway 16A. It's currently zoned Planned Unit Development District. Existing land use is the Powderhouse Lodge. Access is off Highway 16A, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. You can see here, the previous lot lines are on the screen. There were three separate properties since then. Looks like May 17th of 2022, the Board of Commissioners approved minor plat 22-12 to create lots one and two, which is what you see on the screen here. Condition number four of that, that plat was that following the Mylar being plat, or filed at the Register of Deeds, a major planned unit development amendment, be applied for to account for the change in density, and that's why we're here today. Along with this request, the applicant has submitted a proposed future land use plan to include other uses on the property. All but one of those appear to be already included in their planning development, and that is for the rental of ATVs and UTVs. I didn't get a lot of detail on what that operation would look like, so I included a condition of approval to specifically address that, that this PUD be reviewed prior to those operations commencing so that we can account for parking, washing, fueling, maintenance operations at that time, because he didn't have those now. It's just a future plan that he has, not something that he's going to implement immediately. Various conditions. Condition number two was satisfied and removed. Condition number three was updated. Here are the conditions that were previously approved on the screen. Like I said, condition number 23 was updated as there's no longer any interior lot lines. Condition number 24 was removed as it's not applicable. And just kind of an administrative note for the commission, for more accurate tracking, staff determined that amending the original PUD number is more appropriate than assigning a new project number. That's why you see this as a 94-02 because it was the original planned unit development number that was assigned. With that, staff recommends approval of major planned unit development amendment 94-02 with conditions.
Questions for staff?
Jason, I remember when we okayed this. It was all encompassing. There were nine million different things in this. So, simply putting, has that much really changed?
No, not a lot. Just mostly the interior or the lot lines have been adjusted, so that's really the reason for the planned unit development amendment. Like I said, the, the uses that he proposed more or less mean what he has out there now for approved uses, with the exception of that UTV ATV rental. But that was the only one that came up in our review.
Okay. No, that's, that's all I had. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jason? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I forgot to ask for discussion, but nobody spoke up, so. Number 19.
I'm a environmental planner. Number 19 is conditional use permit CO CU 24-0011. It's to allow home occupation to be located on the subject property. The applicant and landowner is Josh Anderson, Host Clamp Customs. He is in the audience if there are any questions. And the agent is Scott Flockhart. Location of the property is 7810 Labrador Trail. Involves 23.97 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Labrador Trail, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in the review of a conditional use permit. Those are on the screen, and the answers are there as well. It appears that the applicant meets these requirements. Staff met with the applicant before they submitted their application. The staff's main concern was traffic on the roads. We suggested to them that they transport the vehicles or the motorcycles to the shop themselves. They agreed to that, and that's what they're going to do moving forward. So, that would really address, you're not having motorcycles come in and out all day. The request was ready for our department review. County addressing came back and said that an address would need to be assigned to the detached shop with the business located in for emergency service response. And the county environmental planner said that they would need to get approval for this onsite wastewater treatment system, the septic tank. They do have a holding tank that is, was installed on the property without a permit. The applicants are going to work with us to get that permitted so they come into compliance. Again, applicants are proposing to operate a full-service custom motorcycle shop. The applicants have stated that they will transport any motorcycles to the property to minimize traffic and noise. The home occupation will take place within the detached garage. The garage sits approximately 600 feet from the nearest residence. The applicants are working with staff to come in to permit some finished base in the garage and the holding tank. Staff has received one letter in support and one letter of opposition for the home occupation. And the letter of support came from the property owner who is closest to the operation. With that, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CO CU 24-0011 with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for Cody?
Cody? Number 11, all motorcycles to be transported to the property by the applicants. Now, does that mean that the applicants ride the motorcycles to the site, or do they?
No, they're, they're
Transport on a trailer?
They're going to trailer them to the site. That road is a gravel road. It has some switchbacks. They've, I believe, tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe they're concerned with people driving up there too on motorcycles. And some of the work that they do is
Not the best road for that.
Correct. So, it's actually probably better that they trailer those in, and that's what they've agreed to do.
You know, one thing I'm struck by this is that, and I'm generally in favor of You know, one thing I'm struck by this is that, and I'm generally in favor of home occupations, but I sometimes wonder, what should be the lines we draw regarding this? I mean, we've taken what appears to be a pristine environment, quiet, uninterrupted, except by the normal commerce and activity of a residential district, and we bring in a commercial activity. This seems to be well planned and thought out, and I'm impressed by that. But on the other hand, I just, sometimes it seems like we approve each and every one of these without any thought as to, there's a reason we have commercial zoning, and it's, you know, it's for the expectation of noise and commotion, which is appropriate, as opposed to residential, where yes, the noise and commotion is one thing, but it's different and we have expectations there. And I, I just wonder if what we think, do we have, I don't have an answer for it, really. Anyway, I just want, I think we should consider in the future and about what our expectations are for these commercial enterprises in, you know, clearly a residential environment. And this would seem the least appropriate one, but I don't think I'm going to oppose this, but sometimes I think we need to be, have more clear strictures as to what should be required, so. That's all I'm sure.
Are there other comments?
I'm sure.
Go ahead.
I noticed in the analysis, it says received one letter in support and one letter of opposition, and I presume the letter of opposition is the one that contains the 25 names or so?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Those, the individuals that signed that in opposition, do they all live right in that area too, do you know?
They all live off of Cavern Road, driving up there. I only saw one signature. I can look through it and verify that, but I only saw one signature off of Labrador Trail, actually off of the road that it accesses. I think everyone else was off of Cavern Road and some of those subdivisions leading up to Labrador Trail.
Yeah. Thank you.
And the letter of support came from this property, just directly to the south.
Yeah.
Adam Chair.
Yes.
Saturday afternoon, I received a phone call, which ended up being like an hour long from a neighbor. He was one of the ones that had signed this petition, and he went through the whole thing with me. And I've got to admit, living out where we do in Hill City, I sure wouldn't want a motorcycle shop anywhere near the area. The thing, one of the things he was concerned was the noise. And of course, they're Harleys, and we know what Harleys are like, especially during the It's very concerning to those people. He said, you know, you can't see it, of course, but you can hear it. The road, I don't know what it's like. He said, it's not a very good road, and he's concerned with trucks going up and down the road. Obviously, they don't want that. They have an HOA. Their covenants say nothing about businesses, so there isn't much they can do on that. They have a road district, which you're a part of too. It's a very uncomfortable thing. They definitely don't want it. I'm not sure how we handle it.
Thank you. I have a speaker request, which you didn't need to do, from Joshua Anderson, but if you'd like to come up and answer questions.
All right. So my name is Joshua Anderson, and I am the property owner at 7810 Labrador Trail. I am also the sole owner of Host Clamp Customs. My family and I moved to Rapid City in July of 2022 after purchasing the property from Kevin and Gail Tom. They stayed in the home for six months after we purchased it, so they could build their new home on, south of our property there. In June 2022, we broke ground on our new shop garage building, whatever you would like to call it. Some people have referred to it as a warehouse, which doesn't make any sense to me, because it's not a warehouse. I go in there, I work, I do my thing, and then I go home at the end of the day. Our building was completed, the build of the, was completed in April of 2023 without any issues being raised by any of our neighbors. I had met with the neighbors one time and one time only when they came down, introduced themselves to us and welcomed us to the neighborhood. We thought it was a good meeting. We enjoyed meeting everybody and getting to know everyone. But then again, there was no complaints or issues that were placed with me about this building and what we were planning on doing. The building was designed, one, to hold my hobby of working on motorcycles. I grew up in Rapid City, moved to Sioux Falls when I was a teenager, joined the military at a high school, did 26 and a half years. I retired last year, and this right here was my dream. This is what I had worked for my entire life, was to do this. That being said, the building was kind of a stepping stone. It was a two-fold thing. One, housed my hobby, allowed me to have a place to go and do what I wanted to do with my motorcycles and stuff like that. But two, it allowed me to kind of get my business off the ground until I could move my business into town. Now, I'm telling you, I've been looking for nine months right now, up to this date, I've been looking for nine months for a place in town or in an, excuse me, in an industrial area in which to house my business. We're moving this week. We're moving the majority of our operation, all but maybe a couple long-term builds that are housed within the building. We're moving everything out into town. All right? Also, up until this point, well, actually up until May 2nd, I had heard not one complaint about anything going on from anyone. Nobody come talk to me, nobody let me know. Now, the complaint served two purposes. One, showed me that there was an issue within the neighborhood. But two, it taught me what I didn't know. I didn't know I needed a conditional use permit to run my business out of a building I put on my property. Hadn't I known that, and I would have applied last year before I started my business, just so that we would be in compliance. All right? Jamie, or Jason and Cody have come down, they've been down to the property, they talked me through everything. We are willing to meet every single one of the requirements that they have posted in the documents. We are willing to do all those. We understand traffic on the road. We understand strangers coming on our road. We understand all that, and we are willing to do whatever it takes to prevent that or to minimize it at all costs. And that means time, money, fuel, for me to go get a motorcycle, bring it back up, do our work and take it back and deliver it to them. We've been doing, we've been doing it since last year, because not everybody wants to come out there. Not everybody wants to ride that road. Our neighbors don't want motorcycles randomly up and down that road. They don't want trucks and trailers, other than maybe mine. We understand that, and we are willing to meet all the requirements that the commission has set up. Thank you, that's all I have.
Questions for Joshua?
What kind of custom work do you do?
Any and all. Any and all. Full builds, repair, maintenance, everything.
Do you have a staff, or is it just you that?
I have two daily employees. One is my uncle. He has been doing this for years, and he was the perfect guy to bring on. And then a good friend of mine from my military service, he moved here from Texas to work with us. So now we have a new citizen in the county.
Other questions?
I do understand, I do want to state, I do understand the worry about sound and noise, and we try to do everything with inside our building, to include starting the bikes and stuff like that. Then we'll open the doors, we'll turn the fans on, we'll ventilate it, so that way we're not bothering the neighbors. There's been times where I've been out on the, you know, out in front of the building and had, you know, working on a bike, starting it, revving it, you know, tuning it and stuff like that. And I'll call Kevin and Gail, be like, hey, I really apologize for this, you know, wasn't trying to be like over loud or anything. They're like, we didn't hear a thing. They're 600 feet away. Everybody else that has made a complaint or signed this petition, they're over 2,000 feet away. There's only one house that can see ours, and they stick out over the trees 2,400, 2,700 feet away, up on a hill. And in fact, they were the ones that organized this petition. A lot of those signatures come from Elkhart and Canterbury Road. It's not even part of our neighborhood. They're completely separate subdivision. We don't have an HOA up there. We do have covenants, which we follow those, but there is no HOA up there. Over where they're at, they might have one. I don't know, it's none of my business. So, and a lot of these signatures that you see, there's two signatures from one household. Okay? So it makes it look like there's more than what there really is. In fact, there was one set of signatures, it was Springfield Holdings, which I think their attorney was up here earlier, and then there was another one right below it, and then the lady that owns Springfield Holdings, same signature on all three. I'm like, what kind of game are you trying to play here? If you don't want us to do it, just sign it once, that's all you need. You don't need to bolster your numbers just because you don't like what I'm trying to do. You know? Not only that, nobody came and talked to me. Nobody, nobody talked to me, except for Kevin and Gail. Not a single person came and talked to me. Oh, you need to go talk to them? No, 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 no. I didn't file the complaints. They did. If they've got a problem, they can come talk to me. I will sit and listen. I will work to make things work, to make our neighborhood what it's supposed to be. That's why I moved there, because it's a beautiful place. Yes, it is quiet. We enjoy the quiet. We don't want to disturb that. We don't want to disturb traffic. You know, in that petition, they mentioned children and young drivers. I have three kids under the age of 10. I thought I was the only one that had children up there. That's what I was told. There's a couple teenagers that live over at the Skulls, that's their kids, and they drive the road all the time. But they drive in the morning and in the afternoon, before and after school. We very rarely see them. So I don't know where a lot of this is coming from, but I had no idea about it until I seen this petition and we got the complaint. Now again, the complaint serves two purposes, positive and negative. Now, we know what we don't, we know what we didn't know, and we can come into compliance. We're okay with that. But the complaint, it's come talk to us. You know, nobody has talked to us. That's my biggest concern with this. I'm trying to be a good neighbor, and I'm not given the chance to be a good neighbor, because nobody will communicate with me. It also said in there that they've been patient and understanding with this whole situation. Well, patience and understanding implies communication. There has been none. Nobody has asked me a question about this. So that's where I stand. Again, I am willing to meet every requirement set forth by the commission.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
One question, I'm kind of familiar with custom work.
Sure.
The vast majority of the time that you're working on customs, whether it's engine or anything, is silence. It's rarely when you have to go, once you're done with a project, you go out and run it, if that's what you're working on, is the engine.
Yep.
I see this as a, what, a 26 acre parcel at the end of the road. I think that there's probably minimal problems with the sound up there. I will support this, approval of this as, this item. I have just a thought, in talking with this gentleman from, up the road from you. He was talking about, and we do this a lot with businesses, a quiet time. In other words, you're allowed to make noise from this to this, and then it's quiet. I don't know if something like this would appease some of those people, if it would help. For example, seven in the morning to five in the afternoon, or, I mean, I don't know. I do work.
We are open from business from nine to five, nine to three on Friday. We are not open Saturdays and Sundays. And unless it's my own personal motorcycle, I'm not working on it after five o'clock. So there won't be, unless I'm riding my motorcycle or my friends are riding with me, there's no other activity going on during that timeframe, or after that timeframe, I would say.
Like I say, a lot of times, even bakeries and things, we have hours that they can operate and hours they can't. Like I say, I don't know if that would help the situation any, if it would make the neighbors feel better about it. I honestly don't know.
See, my, I'm sorry, my question then becomes, what if after a day of work, I decide, me and my friends decide to get on our motorcycles and go for a ride, and we don't come back till 10, 11 o'clock at night? Is that covered under, is that going to be a complaint as well?
No.
I mean, it's personal vehicles, you know?
Yeah, I don't think that's what that aims to do.
I worry about them complaining about it and saying that, when it's just us enjoying ourselves. You know, now, out on the property, we're quiet, we're pretty quiet people, you know? We don't, we don't get crazy, we don't throw parties, we don't, it's not like that. It's just, we run, I run my business out of there day to day. That's it. Now, as of April 26th, we have shut down. They gave us grace enough to finish up what current work we had and shut down by April 26th, and that's what we did. It's exactly what we did, and we haven't turned a wrench in there since, except for on our own personal stuff.
Any other questions, board? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any answer speaker requests?
No.
My two, my two cents on this is, you know, it's not that loud. I mean, I respect Jim's perspective on, you know, where do you draw the line? But I don't see this any different than somebody running a commercial wood business, you know, somebody making a whole bunch of wooden things in there, running skill saws and table saws and everything all day long. My neighbors have snowmobiles that they are constantly wrapping out in their front yard all the time. They've got six or seven machines. They're tuning them, they're testing them, they do that all year long. They put wheels on their skids and drive them up and down the street. You know, I don't have any control over that. It's their personal property, they're not running a shop, they're not doing any of that. Other people that I, you know, have been around, they can, they love to shoot. They go out in their backyard and they pop off rounds all day long. It's, that's their personal property, so sound isn't a big deal to me in this kind of environment. And then you being willing to trailer bikes out there all the time to mitigate traffic, I think is commendable. So that's my two cents. I have got no problem with this.
We do understand that concern with the road. We do understand it fully.
Well, and there's inexperienced bikers that are, you know, if they're out on gravel, I mean, I'm a rider, I, and gravel's, it takes a certain, you know, requirements.
Yes, it does.
Not everybody's going to be doing that all the time. I do worry a little bit, I mean, you're accepting the liability of hauling bikes in a trailer.
Our insurance kicks in for that.
That's, so. I think you're being accommodating to the neighbors in that respect, and we'll support this.
Are we ready for a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? On to number 20. Signs, billboards, and other advertising structures. So item number 20 is ordinance amendment OA 24-05. It's to amend section 312 for signs, billboards, and other advertising structures. This requirement is due to a Supreme Court case in 2015. It was Reed versus Gilbert. It was a Supreme Court case that dealt with content-based restrictions. Our current sign ordinance does not meet that court decision. We cannot regulate any content, so it just has to be size, location, height, things like that. So we did update this ordinance for that. So the basics are the same, they still need a sign permit. We distinguish between, you know, instead of saying what type of sign, it can either be temporary or nontemporary, versus a political, versus a real estate sign, versus anything like that. So it has to be completely content neutral. So that's what came out of that. I'm not an attorney, so I can't speak to it. So if you have specific questions to that, Alexis is here for that. But our sign ordinance did have to be amended because of that case, so that's why it is in front of you.
Do you have a question?
Question?
So in trying to dispose what was struck and what was new, it looks like the entire previous amendment was struck out and thrown out, and then it was completely rewritten. So it's not just that there were subtle changes in different sections that we could see that, it was...
It was completely rewritten. It was completely rewritten.
So in other words, Brittany, if you've got a hot button issue, somebody puts a crunk hot button issue on, we have no say over that.
Content is, can be...
I've got questions as you go through this, but I don't know how you want to do that.
Any other discussion? Questions for staff? Is there a motion?
No, well, hang on, I've got, I've got some questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just what page and...
For example, the flag type of signs that some of the used car lots have that stick up and they go like this. So that sort of thing would be prohibited along with the balloon signs and all that? It would, okay, all right.
So sign types can be, you just can't regulate content. So the shape of it, the type of it, the height of it, the square footage, things like that, the location, those can be, but not anything that has to do with what it says.
Okay. Let's see, that would be two A D. It says legal owner of property, consent of the legal owner. If you were a business owner, how does that work? It says, no sign may be displayed without consent of the legal owner of the property, which is not to be displayed. If you have a business and you're renting it, how does that work?
So it's just like any other permit application. We require that owner to sign, whether it's a building permit, a conditional use permit, they would still have to sign. In some instances, there's off-premise and on-premise signs. So you could have a sign that's actually advertising another business on your property. It might not be your business that is advertising. And that's what we consider an off-premise sign, so you're advertising another business. So that's where that would...
The owner still has to?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Then on E, you've got administrative interpretation and discretionary approval. So that basically means what you, your department decides is what's going to be.
For the most part, that's how we do sign permits now. If there's any concern with any sign permits, if we deny one or approve one, there is always the ability to appeal that decision to the Board of Adjustment. So any administrative decision that's made by our office is always appealable to the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, all right. Let's see, you answered that one. Okay, F, you talk about home occupation. What about a business? How does that work on an on-premise sign?
So it would just be that they're displaying their, so if they're in a commercial district and they're displaying their sign for their business, it's already in allowed use in that zoning district. Correct. Signs are in allowed use in all of the zoning districts. We went back and forth about residential districts or not, but you could have signs that depict the subdivision. So subdivision signs, those are still considered signs in residential districts. So those are typically the kind of signs that you would see in a residential district versus a commercial district. So you could still have, you know, the subdivision signs or ranches will have their, you know, what type of ranch they are, their signs, things like that. So it's just...
Okay. You have display face not to exceed one display per side. That one outside of Hill City that Charlie talked about, where you've got two together, two...
Right, so it could not...
How would that work?
So that one will be grandfathered.
So in the future, then that wouldn't be, okay, all right, good.
It'd be one face per side.
Uh, I guess that's it?
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve ordinance amendment OA 24 dash 05.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Again, I forgot to ask for discussion, but all right. Ordinance amendment OA 24 03, item number 21.
So item 21 is OA 24 dash 03, to amend section 319, the vacation home rental of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. And this was continued from the April 22nd, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. There were some motions on some recommended changes. Those are in your packet. They are like strike throughs and in red. You can see there was a few updates that were requested. I can bring those ones up. Yeah, I know. And then I don't know when you want me to read, at the end?
Yes.
Or the beginning?
Charlie gave us comments on VHR ordinance amendment and wanted them read into the record. I'll let Brittany do that.
Okay. So I'll read this here from Chairman Charlie Johnson. It says, comments on VHR ordinance amendment. It's dated May 7th, 2024. Charlie Johnson, the Pennington County Planning Commission. As this issue is very close to me, I have asked Mike Lewis to see that all those commission members attending the Pennington County Planning Commission today received a copy of my thoughts and comments on this matter. And Mr. Lewis did provide this to our office, which is in front of you. Number one, we have been told by the Board of Commissioners, there have been too few complaints on our current VHR ordinance requirements to justify the ordinance amendments as proposed by the Commissioner-appointed committee. If there were too few complaints, why did we need an ordinance amendment committee in the first place? Number two, we were advised by the Commissioners that complaints they were hearing related to too much government overreach, too much government regulation. Beside this being an ever-present hot button topic, we have countywide planning and zoning, and it has been a good thing for the residents of Pennington County. The appointed committee was more pro-VHR use and expansion, yet proposed very specific guidelines which would have improved our current ordinance for both those opposed and those that support VHRs. Number three, let's talk about complaints about VHRs. Realizing it has been on the Planning Commission's docket to review the VHR submissions for the past few years. A, by far, the number one complaint has been enforcement. B, the number two most referred to complaint has been about parking number of vehicles and property line encroachment. And C, the number three, and always included in the parent, commercial use of a property in residential area. Government overreach and regulation may not even be on the 1 through 10 list, including both position signs on the VHR issue. The previously submitted VHR ordinance amendment by the Commissioners Committee addresses concerns, A, from the VHR operators and applicants, B, from the neighboring property owners, C, the planning department. Pennington County does not have a planning and zoning ordinance system in place. The state of South Dakota does not have our backs on regionally specific issues, and will have little to offering the direction needed to make VHRs workable in the Black Hills. Our local property use has a great many challenges that do not exist in the eastern areas of South Dakota. What better form could the VHR ordinance amendment have gone through than most recent Commissioner Committee? It included VHR owners and operators, planning staff and their legal representatives, planning commission direction, hours of meetings and testimony on ever conceivable aspect of the issue, several advertised public meetings and testimony on this matter, open Pennington County Planning Commission meetings and discussion with citizen input throughout the process. Everything I am presenting above is to be disregarded by the streamlined new version of the VHR ordinance amendment. Should we choose to put this version of the VHR ordinance amendment in place, we give those that openly chose to not operate by the existing planning and zoning regulations a new lease on life in support of their noncompliant actions.
Thank you. I also have a speaker request form from, by Joyce Shigru, who was on the, served on the committees, the citizen committees. Do we want to hear from Joyce first and then have discussion?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Please come forward.
Joyce Shigru, citizen of Pennington County. I have been involved with the ordinances since the very first one. I've been unable to attend meetings, but I have followed what you and the Commissioners have done. I've watched innumerable videos of your meetings. And I, I decided today that, although it was difficult, that I would come and speak to you. I am a neighbor, next door neighbor of a VHR in Silver City. It's legal, nonconforming, so the current ordinance does not apply to them. And I'm also a user of VHRs. And as I watched what the committee did and produced, I didn't see a lot of input from either one of those groups, neighbors or users. So that's what I would like to speak to today. When the committee was formed, I looked at it, looked like a good, good group. And they brought a fresh outlook to the issue of VHRs. And I quickly realized that the environment for VHRs has changed since I was involved like eight, 10 years ago. We now have the short-term rentals like in Rapid Valley, which were non-existent back in the beginning. We were talking about primarily family-owned second homes that they rented out to cover their expenses. That is still true, but we now also have the group that's very commercial. We all have to admit that. They buy houses, their intent is to rent them short-term. And that's the kind that we have in a more urban setting, not incorporated, but more urban setting in the county. So I, I was very devoted to the one acre rule because that worked very well for us in Silver City. We're very densely populated, our lots are very small out there. The one that's a neighbor to me is very close. And so that's worked for us. It hasn't worked for everyone. Listen to Jeannie Bush up on Rochwood Road, they have more acres, they still have issues, but it's worked for Silver City, from my perspective. So I realized that things were changing. And I am in favor, as Charlie is, of the ordinance that the committee developed. I think they put a lot of thought into it. I think it, it takes care of the problem, the one acre problem, so that people with less than one acre can come in for a conditional use permit. Those with an acre and more would have a special use permit or special permitted use. I think that takes care of that. I'm not clear on what criteria would be used for the less than one acre, but I'm sure it will evolve. So that version of, of the ordinance that was proposed by the committee addressed the changing environment, took care of that. So that there are options for those with smaller lots. That would affect us probably in Silver City, although it's very dense, because there are some that rent as many days as they can in the year without being illegal. And they, they might appreciate having the opportunity to apply for a CUP. Also, I think that the, the version proposed by the committee addressed the issues for owners, for neighbors, and for users. This current streamlined, as Charlie just said, version has some protection for neighbors and users, but very minimal. As a user, and I've had the experience in the last seven, eight months of 10 days in a VHR in Sioux Falls, in a very residential area. I looked for indoor signage or instructions like we have out here. I had some instructions, but had a lot of questions that are answered by our current ordinance with the signage required inside. And it meant several calls to the manager or the owner, which could have been avoided had they had indoor signage like we have here. The other one was, it was in Santa Fe, New Mexico. Cost me a small fortune, I won't do it again, but it fit the need. And it was beautiful, beautiful home primarily. The one in Sioux Falls was totally a rental, I could tell that, totally a rental, four bedroom, three bath, total rental. The one in Santa Fe was also a rental, but had some personal use because there were some personal items in the garage. There, again, I did not have all of the information that we would find by our signage requirements here, but there was absolutely not one complaint. That, because what I do with an Airbnb is I write a public comment. Usually it's not real critical. Then I write a private comment that, like in Sioux Falls, there were several things that did not work. And they would have been helpful to our family. We were there for family work, we were not there on vacation, and it would have been helpful to have everything working in that house. So the private comment to them was the refrigerator does not, the water does not work, the dryer vent needs to be cleaned. Things that really do help when you're in a situation that we were in at that time. The one in Santa Fe, everything worked. There was not one thing in a private comment that I could make that was critical at all. And it should have been that way for what I paid for that house. So as a user, I look for information like we have on the indoor signage requirement in the current ordinance and in the proposed ordinance by the committee. It's not in the new ordinance. There are things about parking, but the, just everyday things of quiet hours, which helps owners as well. In Silver City, we have one primary owner of VHRs, and the quiet hours actually help them. I've been told that, because they can use the county as their backup. They don't make enemies of their clients because the county requires them. We've had, the one next door, we had the first guests for the season last week. My apartment, some of you know this, I live in a multi-generational house downstairs. My son and daughter-in-law live upstairs. I am so soundproofed that I don't hear everything. Now, they left their lights on all night, it was very bright, but I didn't hear any noise. It woke my son and daughter-in-law up at 11:30. I don't know if they made a complaint to the manager, but we've already started the season. And that one's legal, nonconforming. Now, the managers do try and hold them to the quiet hours, but legally they can't. So the, the ordinance put forth by the committee, to me, is much better than the current streamlined ordinance. It's, it looks to me like we've given up. It's just going to happen. And that leads me to a comment about complaints, because I watched the video from your last meeting, and I heard the conversation about complaints. And I think the people who are saying we don't have enough complaints are looking at it wrong. Our intent was to take care of complaints. And one of, one of our intents with the current ordinance was to take care of complaints. And the ordinance proposed by the committee would do the same. We set up a, a local manager that's within reasonable distance. And they have to, they have to post who the manager is. So rather than calling the county, which totally does not work, because by the time somebody gets out there to investigate, the complaint is long gone. There's no, you can't, you can't prove it. But with a manager, you can take care of it. You call the people down the block or in Rapid City, they take care of the complaint immediately. So if complaints dropped, I think that's a good thing. I think that shows that that part of the ordinance is working. And so complaints now are probable if we have someone who's operating illegally. Because that, the staff can go out and can prove whether that is actually happening. Where if somebody's too noisy, like the other night, my neighbor was at 11:30 at night, if you call planning and zoning, by the time they get out there, I mean, there's no noise and the people are long gone probably. So I think it's an erroneous way to speak about complaints that we don't have enough to have an ordinance. Because I think that's one of the reasons we have the ordinance and it's working. So as you can tell, I'm in support as a neighbor and... neighbor and a user, of the ordinance that was proposed by the committee. And I watched the video of the county commission when, I wasn't here that day, I don't think. I watched the video of when that, the committee's proposal was not accepted. I think that was short-sighted. I don't know if there's a mechanism where you could ask them to relook at that. If, if the one that's now proposed by the staff is accepted, I'll speak again if I can be at the commission meeting, and I probably can't at the date that it'll come up with their next commission meeting. I cannot be there. But what I would like is for the county commission to revisit what the committee did. I had a discussion with Charlie. I already knew his viewpoint, because he's been very clear about it, and it comes, you know, I can see it on the video. I know where his position is, and I agree with him, actually. I've watched the county commission over many years now, and I've watched, I've watched them do something that I thought was a mistake, didn't have anything to do with V H Rs. But years ago, different commission, probably totally different commission, they set up a mechanism for, it would be like a search committee for members of Planning and Zoning Committee, or Commission. And so they had staff interview the people that applied for Planning and Zoning Commission membership. And they say they had six people apply. They presented the three best candidates to the, to the county commission. I watched them do this twice, and both times, they did not accept the recommendation, or really even discuss it, from the committee that they had put forth to do the interviews. That's a mistake. Because if you're going to name a committee to do something that really would be very helpful to you, and then you disregard their recommendations, you lose the support of the people on that committee and everybody they know. And I don't know, except for Charlie, I don't know anybody on that current committee, but I know how I would feel if it was totally disregarded. And as a citizen, then I think, okay, the decision is already made. They just did, the committee put them through all of that work and expense for nothing. That's a major mistake for an elected body to make. Maybe not with V H Rs, because a lot of people don't know about them, but other issues, a major mistake. And from my viewpoint, having worked many, many, many years in civil service and government, that's an administrative mistake, whenever an elected official does that. And that's what has happened to this committee. If there's somebody here, I don't know them. I, so I don't know if any of them are behind me today. I don't know if they're here. But that's not good. And as hard as this committee worked with an absolutely new viewpoint on things, which was wonderful, to disregard them is not good, because the product was excellent. And, and I'm a person who, you know, believes totally in the one-acre rule. But it's, we need to change. So that's my position. I don't know if there's a way to do it, but this is not going to help us as neighbors or users very much at all. Any questions? Thank you.
I have a speaker request form from Tim Fitzgerald.
My name is Tim Fitzgerald. I'm a resident of High Seega, South Dakota. And I didn't know I was going to speak until I heard what you were talking about today. I came in for the vacation rental house discussion. And I'm here to speak in support of it. And I would just tell you, I feel like I've been on something like a roller coaster the last several years. My wife and I live in High Seega. We've lived there for 20-plus years, and the property's been my family's for 40-plus years. I bought the property from my parents, John and Carol Fitzgerald, some years back. I built my own house. I've been working on it for the last 28 years. And I have a couple of empty lots that are joined my property. The whole one-acre requirement in the past was really a problem for me, because the lots up there are not that big, though I get taxed on them as if they were 100 acres. So I'm retired now. My wife and I would like to build a vacation rental home on a lot that is up there that is 150 feet from my house. I keep a close eye on it. It's my neighborhood. And I felt like before, I just, I just, there was not a chance of me being able to do anything to produce some income in retirement. And now I see that we have that opportunity. Again, so I'm here to support the revised vacation rental house guidelines, because they do make sense. I think the previous owner, our previous person, Harry Sher, talked about his motorcycle shop, and he had 43-day acres, and he's still getting complaints about noise. So I don't know that acreage really makes, was the deciding factor. It's, it's the, the nature of the neighborhood. I think it's about responsibility of the person who's going to run the thing. And I think, and as I read the, the new rules, there are mechanisms in there. If someone's not doing a good job and being a poor neighbor through their, the renting of their vacation property, they'll be told about that, and there'll be some response to that. So I just, I just want to throw my two cents in. I'm hoping that it will go through and that we'd have this opportunity to, to make use of this property that we have. So.
Any questions for Tim?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Planning Commission, discussion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I wasn't here last meeting. Had a medical issue. Couldn't be here. Bummed about that. I did watch it on YouTube. Appreciate the conversation that was going. I think that the, the comments and the subtle changes made to this ordinance are definitely a step in the right direction. There were some things of the original committee, although I respect the time that was put in, the conversations we've had, all of the meetings that we had. I think I've made my position clear that there's, I thought it was a little bit overreaching in some areas. There were some things I wanted to see removed. But I also wanted to see things streamlined for planning and zoning, to be able to do it without a vacation home rental coming before the planning commission every single time, and having them be able to go through their checklist and sign stuff off. So I think this is a step in the right direction. I think it's a pretty good step that way. It does give some guidance and some oversight. And it does, I think it will help bring people into compliance, which is another big thing. And I don't want the county to become the police force for vacation home rentals. So I'm going to support this amendment, and that was my.
Okay. Other comments? Discussion?
I may comment on it, too. I think this new version of it takes it out of from the administration of vacation home rentals to operator status. I don't know how many other categories we try to administer, but I like the way that this works. And I know that, you know, it doesn't address what kinds of complaints that a neighbor could make. But there is, again, there's a rationale that you should make sure that you don't have complaints, so that your neighbors don't have to call in, because now we've got a section here to be able to remove that license from a vacation home renter that is not doing the appropriate things to keep clean, quiet, and so on in there. I just, I like this so much better than the whole list of other things that we had in, when we were trying to administer that. I like the fact of this owner operating stuff. There's penalties if you aren't doing it right. And I, I think this has gone a long ways into the appropriate way to head.
Other comments?
Michael?
In my way of thinking, we're too streamlined on this. I think we should go back, like Joyce was talking about a little bit, and rethink this thing. The problem is, the reality is, I'm afraid that if we do make this more complicated, by the time it gets to the Board of Commissioners, that it's not going to go through. I think what is here is what they want, like it or not. If we were to go through with this, the only thing I would add to this is possibly have some quiet hours, which is what we had before any other one. I would really not like to see this, but I'm just afraid the reality of the situation is that this is the one that's going to go through.
I would just say that this is heading in the right direction over the existing ordinance. This addresses a lot of what the public was asking for, what the property rental establishment was asking for, and what the commission was asking for. It's not to say that this can't continue to be amended as more complaints and more problems come up. But I think that right now, this is, takes us in the right way beyond our existing ordinance, which is why I support it. And then it can always come back here to add additional stuff as we see more items coming up, or more complaints happen, or those kind of things. So that's my.
Other comments?
I would just make one more, too, about that. And I can't even think of the name of their association that was set up. One of their things is to put on educational things, you know, for vacation home renter owners, to say, you know, here's how you kind of, kind of run a, a good operation. And I know that they're interested in, in trying to slow down any complaints by saying, hey, you know, if you do this, you might not have a complaint here. And the whole goal is to get vacation homes so that you don't really even know that they're there, that people come in, stay asleep, visit the hills, and then go home.
Madam Chair. I just, I'd like to comment relative to Kevin Burton's comments, because I think he's right on track. I think one of the things that was looked at with the original draft was that trying to come up with a cure-all forever type thing. And ordinances are made and designed to be amended as time goes on to, to fit the needs. And I think that's what we have to be a little bit more cognizant of, is that it's not going to be perfect. We need to deal with the issues as they come about and make the changes at that point in time. So I can't speak on behalf of the, of the commission, per se, but I think that, I think that this is a step in the right direction at this point in time. And I agree with Mr. Lewis that this is probably much more acceptable and probably would be adopted rather than going back and trying to get the original back.
Thank you. I also missed last, last meeting when this was discussed. And I have two comments. First one, the government overreach and regulation. We hear that about a lot of things we do. It's not just vacation home rentals. If we don't let somebody use their property the way they think they should be able to, it's government overreach. So I take that with a grain of salt. The other thing, I was wondering if any of the other commissioners had any thoughts about increasing the license fee. The license fee in here is $150 every three years, which seems extremely low to me. I would like to see that double to $100 a year anyway. It's, it's still extremely low, knowing that vacation home rentals must be pretty profitable, or people wouldn't be doing them. So just, I'm not going to make it in, in the form of a motion, but I wondered if there was any discussion or thought of that from other commission members.
Throw my two cents in. I agree with you. I think it's, I think it's ridiculously low, but it also might help bring people into compliance and actually get licensed. And then you can incrementally, you know, increase those fees as necessary. So I don't see it as being a roadblock to stopping passing the ordinance. And like I said, it, it's something we could amend later to increase those fees. I think the non-compliance fee, you know, the penalty that's in there.
$150.
I would like to see that being a bit strict. Mike, what, what page was that?
At nine.
Okay. Any other comments?
Madam Chair. I might just comment on that, too. I, I think the renewal fee was intentionally put at that level to try to bring everybody into at least, you know, file that, that's what they had. The penalties become much more important then, is that if they're, if they're not in compliance, you know, as, as far as the license fee is concerned, the, the penalty was the overriding factor on that. So.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
You mentioned this to me before the meeting started, and so I did think about it. But I have to agree with Gary. I think we need to try to induce people to do the right thing. And once we have them signed up, so to speak, then we have, we can, I, I think we can operate more clearly and effectively. I really do. And one comment on what Joyce and others have commented on in regard to the committee that formed this, and of course, Charlie, I know, is distressed. But you know, when you form a committee, and you've got good, industrious people, they always want to provide the ideal solution. They work hard at it. It's a testament to the kind of people that were on that committee. But legislation, I think, is better if it's merely tolerable as opposed to ideal. So, and I, I like this. I didn't think I'd like this version of the, of the regulation, but I do find it simple and more direct, and it can be amended, and I'm sure it will be over the years. But I think we're, we're going the right direction.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Move to approve ordinance amendment 24-04 as is.
Sir.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
That's Michael.
Yep. I'm the birdie.
I don't believe we have a need for an executive session.
No.
Oh, fees. We need to, yes. I'm sorry. I just skipped right over, because I wrote notes all over it. Ordinance, item number 22, ordinance amendment OA 24-04, just brings this into alignment with what we just did, correct?
Yes, that is just actually amending the fee section of the ordinance in addition to the, this 319 to match. So it would be the, currently it reads Q, the review fee is $100, so it would read the license fee is $150.
Okay.
That is actually the motion I made was to approve 04, not 03.
Uh-oh. Well, maybe we better go back and do it right.
I will back up and also make a motion to approve OA 24-03.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So now we have motions on both of them.
Yes.
Okay. In kind of a convoluted manner, but, okay. Executive session needed for anything?
Nope.
No? Okay. County Board report.
The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the April 22, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Items from the public? There's only a couple public here. Do you have anything to say? Items from staff?
We just have the building permit report. Our numbers are moving upward again. They're looking more like the 2022, 2020, 21 numbers. Our single-family residences and our overall building permits are from last year. So.
Items for membership?
Madam Chair, I may be late next meeting. It's a Tuesday.
I was gonna say, is our next meeting is on a Tuesday because of Memorial Day? Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else from, from members? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
To move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.